Full state has to adopt it. And it's usually done at the conclusion of the budget cycle. And basically, your appropriations, your tax appropriations that you projected are what is part of this appropriations limit. And they give you calculations, and you have to make sure you fall below that. So the maximum appropriations for general fund is 12.6 million. And right now, based off of our taxes, it's at 10.3 million. So we're below that threshold. So we're required to do that. Ever since in 1979.
So if we don't approve it, we can't spend, we can't pay our bills?
Exactly. Technically, yes.
Using taxpayer.
All right.
Yes.
Well, we could use George's money. Then he wouldn't be able to buy his technology.
Right. And the reason behind it is if you go above the appropriations limit, then the whole caveat was you make fund money back to taxpayers.
Right.
So we're not over the gamut. We're fine.
Thank you. Any other questions, gents, or Robert? Seeing none. Go ahead. Any members of the public have any comments you'd like to make on item number 28? Seeing none, let's go ahead and close public comments. Council members, further comments? No further comments, I like it. Beautiful. Do I have a motion to adopt the attached resolution?
So move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further comments? Seeing none, call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any votes? Thank you, Robert. Wonderful job on that one. Moving on to item, item number 29.
I think we're a tag team. I'm gonna tag out on this one.
I know, I'm gonna tag out. But I'll start. After all, this is Finance Day here. So you, we started this process back in March. We were reviewing reserve policy, talking about revenue alternatives, all the master plans that we have in progress, what the capital needs are, then we got into the operational revenues as well. So staff, I think, has done an excellent job putting this budget package together for the council this evening and walking the council through a number of those things. We have revenues of about 11.6 million against expenditures of about 11.4. We have a year-end positive balance of about 8.7 million. That's without ERAF and without transfers in from parcel tax at 20 percent. Those are two of the major changes in this year's budget. We took ERAF out of the operational costs, put it below the line, so we're not counting on that as operational revenue. That's always at risk at the state level, so we could lose that in any given year. So this year's budget is below the line, we're not counting it as operational revenue. The parcel tax allocation, we talked about already, we changed it from 60-40 to 80-20. That 20 percent goes into the town's operational budget, below the line, pays for the major fiscal change this year within the police department, increasing the sworn deployment from 19 to 21 officers. So in terms of major fiscal changes, there's only four departments that have significant major fiscal changes in them. The first is the city council, we're triple your pay. Just kidding.
25 percent increase.
It was only a 25 percent.
25 percent increase.
It was a 35 percent increase.
No, the three times zero is zero. That's right. So the major fiscal changes within the city council budget are primarily due to the council chambers. We put some money in there for adjusting case for the carpet over the next year. We don't know when its condition's gonna be, but just in case, it's a number in there, we're not gonna spend it if we don't need it. The rest of it is that we have two restrooms in here. The one on this side has holes in the wall and the plaster about the size of my head. And you can walk along the tile floor, and please don't touch the tile floor because it is quite dirty and possibly moldy, and we wanna clean that up as well. So those are the major fiscal changes within the city council's budget. That all comes out of your salary.
Okay.
The finance budget is, major fiscal changes is audit and some licensing costs with connecting the software. The public works department, that's, these were changes that are now a year-round cost. That's the expanded maintenance of the park and expanded maintenance of the public rights way. Those are now annualized into that budget, and that creates the major fiscal change. The police department, as I mentioned, is going from 19 to 21 sworn to additional officers. So at the end of the year, your unassigned general fund balance is about 5.4 million. That is after we've taken out your 35 percent reserves and allocated some as the budget indicates. So in addition, you've got an email today, I've had some one-on-one with some council members. One of the things we're gonna add into the budget transmit letter at the very beginning is a discussion of the town's off-sheet liabilities connected with the cowper's pensions and OPEB. Those are probably in the neighborhood of, what, Robert?
About between eight and 11 million.
Eight and 11 million, depending on whether you look at it from a market value of assets or an actuarial value of assets. And that concludes my part of the presentation. Staff is all lined up this evening. Q. Do you have any questions or any detailed questions you might have on any of their departmental budgets? It's basically stump to chunks over there, so.
You can, Councilman Lewis.
I just, well, about the unfunded liabilities. I'm surprised that it's not above the line already in listed, because I know that through the Finance Committee, I mean even from last year, we talked about that would be, we'd bring that up as a liability and not even as a footnote.
Well, they're not required to actually be in the town's operating budget, because they're not part of our annual operating cost. We do have incorporated into our budget our annual required contributions. That's why they're into our budget. The unfunded perspective of that between market value versus actuarial value and actual liability, that's tracked every year as part of our audit that comes to. So it's in there. In the budget, we don't put additional money in there. What we've done this year, though, with ERAF, taken that up below the line. That's coming back to the council at the July city council meeting with a recommendation that we use the billion twenty thousand of ERAF that we got in fiscal year 13, 14 and pay an additional amount toward the OPEB unfunded liability. There's been some discussion on the council and at the Finance Committee level that we don't really wanna pay 100 percent of that off-sheet liability for OPEB, because some of that's related to current employees, and they may not be here, we may not have that long-term liability. You don't know how long we'll have that debt, so that's that discussion.
What we did say is...
Could you say what I was trying to say, please?
Well, last, when we looked at the budget last time, we did say, I think it was Mr. Dobbie that actually made the point, is that, you know, we have an obligation really to put that forward, to put that on the sheets, as you and I had discussed, George. And I think it's important that everybody, while we're looking at our budget, that we know that we've got these other things that are gonna require funding. Now, we can't use the parcel tax to pay for that, but at the same time, the community needs to understand why we're saving up money and what we're gonna use it for, because there has been some misunderstandings by people, the public and others, saying, hey, you've got these big reserves, why aren't you giving them? Why can't you give us bigger raises, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So it's really important that people understand that past councils, you know, this wasn't, yeah, it got passed down, and we're the stewards here of trying to fix the problem. And with the, you know, the great leadership on the Finance Committee, and here, we've done a yeoman's job of paying off our side fund for the pers, paying off, starting to pay off the OPEB. And so, you know, we've cut the thing more than in half. So actually, if you add everything up, I think today we put in about seven, five to seven million dollars, counting the side fund. Yeah. So we've taken out of our budget and paid these things down. And that adds to, that improves the budget's agility, because we're not making that debt service payment. So it's, really, it's important it gets put up in the front, and I appreciate, George, you're doing that, but we really just need to make sure that it stays in front of the public. Other towns like Menlo Park have it right up there on the front. And I think it's important that we do a similar thing, because it keeps it in the forefront. It's a real liability, so.
Any other questions? Seeing no more questions, I'm gonna ask members of the public, any comments from the public on this item? Seeing no comments from the public on this item, bringing it back to council. Robert, you've done a, I think, Robert, I just wanna say, Robert, you did a wonderful job. I know that the budget is not always that much fun, but I'm sure it's really fun for you. And that's why you chose it as a career. But we enjoy hacking this out. This has been months of working on budget-related issues, so.
So, for all of you, if you haven't, they've given us a binder, okay? We get a big binder like this, right? This is beautiful, all tabulated and everything. There's a, there's a hard copy back there that has been made for you to take. It's online, there's so much transparency. When I was elected to council in 2008, the budget document was unreadable. It was, it was a blur of numbers that really, we had, nobody could figure anything out. And so, over the years, this is the best budget cycle that I've set through. The clarity that the town staff has presented budget items to us, and the work that the council has done with staff, and all the department has, have really done a great job in presenting and keeping their budget down, keeping, you know, the potential increases. And we're in a really good position. It's a, it's a really good place for the residents of Atherton to be in, for the town of Atherton to be in. And it hasn't come without a lot of foresight from recent council members, Councilman Dobbie and Whitmer, and, you know, in the making hard decisions, and this council in continuing those hard decisions. So I'm, I couldn't be more pleased with the staff's work. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
But, Robert, I'm glad, go ahead.
Go ahead.
I don't know if George told you, I mentioned him yesterday, Robert, that I thought that this was the best budget that we, that we've seen, that I've seen. We've had some scant budgets, and we've had some, actually Deborah had prepared a very good budget a number of years ago, but this is very good, a great presentation and its clarity. It had a lot of questions on it. And we had, you know, besides the off-balance-sheet liability, I just had a few comments, and the comments, you know, for the rest of my colleagues here are these. First off, I know that we made the decision on the ERAF. And again, this is, you know, maybe precluded because it's public versus private, et cetera. But we've essentially changed our disclosure statement, so to speak, when we changed the ERAF, how we're going to treat ERAF, and we put it below the line. Normally, when you do that, then you restate all your past numbers. And that didn't happen here in the beginning. And so, if we do do that, I think for clarity and for trackability, it would be worthwhile to at least update the previous year for trend analysis. And so I think that that would be something important. Also, my only other regret, and I know we've had a number of meetings on it, but getting to this presentation here with these numbers on a department-by-department basis with the detail, and it's excellent detail, it would've been better if we had been there at the beginning of the month, for me, because, you know, we get this, it's a lot of information, and, you know, we all spent a lot of time with George. But if we could have this two to four weeks in advance, and we'd be here where we were now a month ago, I think that things would've been all hashed out, and we'd have time to reconsider some things, because sometimes, all of us look at a lot of things, and, you know, you, we have a quick discussion, and then suddenly we want, you know, you come back and you think of something new, well, the votes aren't even taken. And so I think it's important that we have a little bit more time, especially on something so important, because it's important not only for you, for us, but it's important for you, because, you know, it's a sign of a good budget if we're not doing budget adjustments. And so I'd like to see us maybe consider, maybe for the next year, I've talked to George, maybe we do a two-year budget, and then we have a one-year adjustment. That might make things a little bit simpler as well, but anyway. But it was an excellent job, and appreciate all the hard work that you and George and all the department heads put together, because this is really the best one I've seen in a very, very long time.
Thank you, Bill. Vice Mayor, Bill Young.
Well, Robert, I'll say this is the best budget I've seen, too.
No.
But I'm all for it. And for the public, I mean, what is in here is difficult to work through, but online, you can really get through it quickly. It's, it's quite impressive with this new software that we have. So the transparency that we're providing to the general public, I think, is the reason that we can have this budget defined so well and so clear. It's really remarkable software. I think, I hear what you're saying on the ERAF, but if you wanna compare back, there's a miscomparison if you're treating it differently in two different years. I think we're being conservative on ERAF. We may well, in the current budget, we've got $700,000 below the line, and we may end up, well, we ended up with over a million dollars this year. So we just don't know if it'll come through or not. I think that's the right decision. I don't have anything new to say. I think that this council and staff has done a very good job around finances. It's the greatest strength. Now, we need to be aware, the decisions we've made around finances and what we've really tackled is cleaning up what hasn't been, which has been, what has been messy, and addressing these unpaid, unfunded liabilities, which are overhung us and caused us costs each year. And the Finance Committee has taken the lead and given us advice to move on that. And I think that is the right thing to do. Going forward, we're gonna be looking at these capital improvement projects, which have been deferred for a long time, and these are big projects. So I think that it's good that this house is in order, because I, we can't pay for the capital improvement projects, we have to find alternative funding.
Yeah.
But I also don't think we should be the only ones to decide which of the priorities. I think that needs to be the residents, and we need to find a way to have them do that, enable them to do that.
Thank you, Vice Mayor, Bill Young. I'm simply just gonna say thank you to all the department heads, all the committee members that spent a ton of time on this, all the staff, and all the council members that have worked really hard on this. Can I get a motion to adopt the recommended budget for 2014, 2015?
You should. I'll second.
All in favor, all fast. All right. Second, any further discussion?
I think all unanimously take, you know, take the credit of making the motion.
You guys all, and you all deserve it. And so we'll all say, we all made the motion, and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I'd like to say real quick, thank you very much, but it's a team effort. It starts from George to all my counterparts here, to Teresa, to our staff, and through our working relationship with the council, we've had a bunch of priorities that started from last year that we've worked through throughout this year. We've implemented them in this coming year. Capital projects are important to the council. We've been moved from Banda that, we understand long-term liabilities is a big issue, and we're working on that, and we've tackled that problem with OPEB. We've looked at cowper's at the Finance Committee level. But again, it's something that we are addressing, we are looking at, and we're gonna continue to work forward with council priorities. And again, it's not just me, but it's a team effort. Thank you for the accolades, but all this couldn't have been done if George wasn't here, giving us the insight, giving us, you know, the outlook and the information and how it should be presented, and also the departments, and Chief, and Mike, and Lisa, I think, and Steve, we're all a team. And what you see here is because you all worked together to take in all the priorities that you set for us.
Thank you again, Robert. We're gonna go ahead and...
Oh, yeah. He's taking you off now.
I wanna reiterate, Robert, I wanna reiterate what Bill said about, or really, maybe Georgia. I mean, we've spent months on this, so we're familiar with the pieces. But to get the whole, it would be good to go back through it in detail again, and it's very hard to do it nine weeks. It would really be better if we, it's your planning cycle, but if we could do it, if we could have had this three weeks before...
It's, I understand. In May, in the May council meetings, for the general fund portion only, the, each department's detail was provided with the summary, but then here is the actual object detail level with all the different explanations. So that was provided in May. The detail by line item, what this is, this is with what you see here. You know, and I think next year we'll, we'll improve, and, you know, we had a lot to discuss and look over, have questions. You all know, if you have questions, you can ask George, and, you know, you can meet with me. You know, I have no problem doing that, and we'll continue to work. It's an evolving process, and, you know, we find little things here, we tweak every year, you know, tweak it.
Thanks, Robert.
Thank you.
We're gonna go ahead and move to item number 30, local municipal services review. City manager, George Rogers.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. It's Teresa's report. This, this item actually came as kind of a discussion between members of the council and Teresa and I, and we were talking about, you know, what LAFCO does when they go out and do a municipal services review, they look at all the services that municipalities provide. So we do get calls here at Town Hall, you know, someone has a sewer issue, they don't call the West Bay Sanitary, they call the town to, hey, this is going on, what can I do? Same thing happens with water service or phone service, believe it or not, they call the town on the cell phone, because the pipeline might not be working. So we thought maybe we could develop a document that's kinda like a municipal services review that provides the public, something we can hand out to them, you know, like when they move into town. You know, these are all the services that are provided, here's the people that provide them, here's some phone numbers, some contacts, this is some general information about that particular agency. So on the list that you see there in the staff report, that's the list of agencies that we could cover. Some of them, though, we are member agencies to, like SBWA for refuse, and the library, JPA, and others. That discussion, and fire, that discussion will have a lot more detail, a lot more meat on the bones in the staff report that comes back to the council, because we actually have a hand in that destiny. We don't so much have a hand in the destiny of sanitary or water. But those will be more general information. So we're looking to put together that report for the council in the next few months, bring that back, you can take a look at it, and tweak some of the information. And if you want us to go further with a particular agency, we can do that. If you just want some synopsis of what their boards like, what their budgets like, and phone numbers, we can do that as well. This is just an entree into that, of what the work Teresa's gonna be doing for the next few months.
Beautiful, George. Any questions from council? Any?
I just have a question. So this is not to assume or presume that we would be potentially taking any of these services in-house?
Or would we want to, correct? Yeah, for some of them.
Okay, like Palo Alto?
Right.
Right. They own no water, they own no this and that, but this is just to evaluate what all of these vendors or service agencies do for us, and would there be alternatives recommended or, not recommended, explain, like, is there an alternative to any of these?
Cable. I mean, there's alternatives for cable, so we can talk about some of those, but another one that's not on the list that we should add is animal services to the list. But there's not an alternative to fire, there's not an alternative to water, some of those are breezed out, but some there might be.
And would it also encompass the amount of franchise fees or fund fees that the town would have to check? This would be very helpful. I think this would be very helpful.
Good question. Is what initiated this, the idea of putting something together for new residents that are moving into town?
No, it was actually the mayor. Given we were talking about municipal services and LAFCO and other agencies, and we were talking about the fire department and other things, and so we, the idea just kinda genesis from there.
And since this is not a question, I'm not gonna make a comment yet. So any other questions? Seeing no more questions from council, we're gonna go ahead and ask members of the public, any members of the public wanna make any comment on item number 30? Seeing none, I'm gonna go ahead and close public comments. Final comments for the council. Yeah, this item is a biggie for me. I think that the residents of Atherton and residents in general, it's a confusing town. We don't provide all the services for this town. Some members of the public do believe that we do, and it's often, they go, oh, well, you. Well, wait a minute, I have nothing to do with the sewer district, although in a lot of cities, the town council is responsible, public works is responsible for that service. So in the interest of transparency, which we're trying to be more transparent, as you've heard with our budget and cycle and so on, I made the suggestion that I think that we ought to be more transparent about the services that the town provides and that the services other agencies do provide, and help with that link to getting information for our residents, because most residents do believe that we are actually that provider of that service. So in the interest of providing information, if the other agencies don't wanna provide that information, we're, we're an agency that's willing to provide you with whatever we know. So if we can be that confident, we will, to our residents. So any other comments from council members?
I'm good.
We're good? Oh, wow. Geez, it's not often that we're all quiet. So this is just obviously a direction.
You're doing an entree and helping out.
That I really appreciate. I know that I got people flying home in places in the next few days.
No direction needed. You'll see this in the next three months or so.
Beautiful. I thank you very much. The staff's gonna have fun working on it. Council reports, thank you, everybody, for all your council reports. There was some confusion, we had some difficulty with computers this month, but provided all council reports are published, so you will also see those online as well.
Can I, I just want to, in my, one of my, the items in my council report was the San Francisco noise abatement roundtable meeting that was last Wednesday on June 4th, two months ago. And one of the things that really needs to be disseminated to our residents, because it does affect the airspace and the additional air noise, that on May 17th, the San Francisco Airport essentially closed two runways, they only had four, and they're, because of major construction. And so that's gonna go through the summer and end in September. So they're rerouting airplanes, they're doing lots of other things, they're gonna be using San Carlos Airport as an overflow airport, there's gonna be increased noise and stacking up and vectoring airplanes, so you're gonna hear more noise. And so I think that if the city manager and his, that's a rap, or your other communications could send the link to the San Francisco Airport development runway, it's a federally mandated repair, and so they can't not do it. Anyway, I just, I think that if people are aware that this is happening, then they won't be so upset.
So for, for the residents of town, it's not all survey?
No, it's not all survey. In fact, I get lots of complaints from Lindenwood people with the 747s and the Hatties for going to San Francisco Airport, coming through their neighborhood, and reporting...
Especially at 4:00 in the morning, they're going to Hawaii.
It's the Hawaii United Airways, yeah. And so we're...
And they're just landing, and they're on the beach already, so.
Right.
Any other comments on council reports? So any future agenda items?
Well, I'd like to suggest, there was an article in the San Jose Mercury News on Sunday, I believe it was, that Palo Alto is building a new animal control and trying to establish a public-private partnership, and they're looking, they have, they're serving three other jurisdictions today, and they were actually open to asking other jurisdictions to consider. So I spoke to the city manager about it, but I think that we should probably, you know, give some time and then look into that. I realize that we're on a pay-as-you-go annual basis, we're not committed to all the expense of building the whole new location, but, but I think we should take a hard look before we review or renew next year to consider really Palo Alto before they weren't interested, but now they are, and I think that that's, we should not miss that opportunity to at least discuss it.
Thank you, Bill. George? Any other future agenda items, council members? Seeing none, let's go ahead and make final 33, which is final public comments. Any members of the public wanna make a final comment? Seeing none, thank you, members of the public.
I got a comment. I do have a public comment.
Just like...
Not a member of the public would...
Oh, sorry. It was just a fact. It's a factoid.
One factoid it is.
Okay. Some of you may know that I did go on a little trash truck ride around and picked up trash on Atherton Ave, and I was amazed. I know, we know we have a lot of green waste here, which is driving our rates up high, we've talked about it many, many times. But I'll let you know that on Atherton Ave alone, on Tuesday mornings, 20 tons of green waste, just from that area and the cul-de-sacs off of that, come off of that street. And you should go ahead and look at all the other streets where similarly, Isabella And you should go ahead and look at all the other streets where similarly, Isabel, et cetera, where similarly we have zillions of green cans out there, that's what's driving our rates up so high. I knew that was high, but I didn't know 20 tons from just one street. It sounded, it was amazing.
Was that in your council report?
No, 'cause it didn't have to do with town business.
Green waste, thank you. You have the final public comment?
I just wanted to address, I was listening to a tech presentation last night, and they talked about the issue of carbon in the atmosphere.
Yeah.
And global warming, and it indicated that if you look at the total amount of carbon that we have, the total amount of carbon has been the same since the beginning of time.